Bobby, ready?
Nick?
Ready.
He's ready?
Yep.
Roger? No? Marlene?
I'm ready.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Fix it.
Okay, here we go, kids.
Yep.
Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission, August 3, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Smansky?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner? Commissioner Berto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder? Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you.
Approval of agenda, at this time the Planning Commission can take action to approve the August 3, 2023 agenda. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Bob, second?
Second.
By Mick, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Berto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest? Is there any member of the committee that has any conflict of the agenda items tonight? Please speak up.
I personally do not have a conflict, although there may be a perceived conflict. I'm employed by the Little River Casino Resort, which is an enterprise of the tribe. I don't interact very often with the tribe, if at all. They have no oversight over me, and I have no interaction whatsoever with the tribe's EDC. So disclosing that ahead of time, I know there's been a couple different times, a legal review performed by, I believe by Mr. Saylor. So I wanted that out there. I don't want there to be a perception of any ambiguity, so letting that know it doesn't affect my vote.
Thank you. I have all the confidence in you, so...
Thank you.
I know Alex that's coming here for the repair shop. He's a friend of my grandson's. I've only met him a couple of times.
Okay. All right, thank you, Marlene. And I just want to mention something. Please don't let personal opinions sway your thoughts, and please stay to the zoning ordinances as they are presented when you're making your decisions. Thank you. Approval of minutes, at this time the Planning Commission can approve the July 6, 2023 meeting minutes. There a motion?
I have a motion to...
Motion by Marlene, second?
Second.
By Bob, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Berto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence? Correspondence has been shared with the Planning Commission and will not be read aloud tonight. Presentation and speaker, we have none tonight, so we'll move along to public hearing. Time now is 7:04, and this is public hearing Z-23-04.
Yes, so this was a zoning amendment that was kind of brought to my attention by, you know, looking at the zoning ordinance. It's come up in a couple properties. We don't have too many properties in the city that have more than one frontage that aren't a corner lot, but it does occur in some instances where someone may own two lots that are back-to-back, creating a situation where they have road frontage on opposite sides of their parcel. And it kind of creates a scenario where almost the entirety of the parcel is a front yard, and accessory buildings are required to be located in a side or rear yard. So this amendment would address that situation, and I have a little diagram there in the memo that was provided to you guys. We would create a definition for established front yard and dictate which, you know, front yard that is the true front yard when you think about practically where your driveway comes off of where your house fronts, that you couldn't still have, you still could not have an accessory building in that front yard, but this regulation would make it so that you could have an accessory building in what appears to be your rear yard, but per the zoning ordinance currently is still dictated as a front yard. So to me, this is a simple amendment for kind of a procedural thing, but I will open it up to the commission, well, I guess we'll open it up to the public, and then let you guys deliberate on that.
Okay. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comment on the Z-23-04, please come to the podium, name an address, please.
And I will add, there were no written comments received.
Okay, thank you. All right. No public opinion. We'll move on to discussion. Open up to Bob.
I'd like the wording Katie provided to us to look over on it, and looking at the parcel itself, it makes perfect sense to me to have it that way, and elders are going to be able to, we're going to see that probably two or three more times in the city someplace. It's just the nature of what people bought property.
Okay, Mike?
And Katie, I just want to confirm that the driveway was really arbitrary. It's just establishing where the front is, so if you had a front porch and not a driveway, it was still, that would still be allowed, correct?
Right, the driveway and where the house is addressed off of, because I know we don't have driveways on every parcel in the city, but, you know, where your address comes off of, yep.
Now, would it be possible for somebody to change their address from one side to the other if because of the location of a secondary building would make more sense?
No, because you cannot eliminate, unless you're demolishing your home and rebuilding on the other side of the street, is the only instance that you would be able to change your address. We don't remove addresses unless the structure is removed.
Thank you. Pam?
No, I agree with Bob. I think the way Katie's got it set up here is very understandable, very clear.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
I have none.
Okay, Marlene?
No.
No? I think it's pretty cut and dry, so... Okay, it is 7:08. We'll close this, and then we will open up public hearing 7:08, Z-23-05.
So this zoning amendment was brought forward by an applicant. I do want to remind the commission that although there was an address provided on the application, this is not an amendment sought for the specific property, but for the entirety of the R2 district, specifically Key Street frontage. The applicant is requesting that automobile repair facility is added to the special land uses that require key street frontage in the R2 district. I also included in your packet the memo that was provided on, for the, well, it was written July 30, but I believe it was provided for the August 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and the minutes associated with that meeting when this applicant had come before the Planning Commission to canvass for this potential amendment. And there were no written comments received for this.
If the applicant is here, could you please come to the podium, please?
Hi, my name's Alex Gilts. My address is 4673 Cabaret Bay Highway, Manistee.
Could you please explain why, I know you addressed this a couple years ago, maybe a year ago?
Yeah, my problem delay back then was I needed to do drawing plans, and they were quite expensive. I did not have the money at the time to go forward with that, and I didn't know if I was actually, COVID actually just hit, so I didn't know if I was going to follow through with it, and, but now I've decided that I should definitely do something with it, and I would like to make it a business. I do love my vehicles and helping the community, so...
Back when you met with us, you were going to canvas the neighbors' opinions? Did you get, did you have a chance to do that?
I have talked to them in person. I told them that this was happening today, too, and they all seemed to be very friendly, and I talked with the neighbor that's right behind my building, and then the other, I don't know if it's the corner lot, she has a very big garage.
Did you get any written correspondence from them?
I did not.
No?
But I can, if, sure I can tell them to come if they'd like to.
No. What do you think, Katie?
I think that just keeping in mind that although, you know, it might be good to see what the neighbors around this particular property think, that this wouldn't necessarily just affect this particular property. So I don't know how, you know, it's always good to get comments from the public, but this would not just affect the neighbors. It would affect anyone on a key street segment in the R2. So keeping it more in line with that idea than for the specific property.
You would suggest that we get written comments?
I don't, I don't think that it should have too much of an impact on the decision that you guys are making.
Well, it used to be, many moons ago, a car, car gas station anyway, so you're not going to do any fuels or anything like that, are you?
No, no, just kind of, I guess, plan is to do like kind of brakes, suspension, the basic kind of the everyday maintenance on the car, nothing else.
Oil changes and...
It depends. I have to look at then for like catching oil and stuff and having, you know, oil separator and proper storage and that, so I have to kind of figure out if I actually do want to do that, so I can do that properly.
Any questions?
More comments? My concern is that we're not looking at just your property. You're looking at having this extended throughout the whole community on all key streets in the R2 district, and to me, that's opening up way too big of a challenge for somebody all of a sudden on that has a nice garage, two-car garage, and now they decide that, well, it's authorized, I can start doing auto repairs in my neighborhood, and I don't think that was the intent when you first came forward. Again, you were buying a location that was previously a gas station on a semi-commercial area. I just feel uncomfortable opening this up so that it becomes available for anybody in that, you know, again, a very broad stroke across all of Manistee, and I think that it's going to cause some challenges and problems in the future, whereas a special use permit, we can look at it independently and look at each individual property and decide what's best for the community.
Correct. We discussed that before previously, and I wasn't sure why we decided to go this route, too, with the zoning, changing that, like what we're trying to do now, but I didn't know what restrictions were for doing the special use permit.
And I did just want to add that what he is proposing would be a special land use, so you would, if, if this was something that you guys were looking to approve, it would be a special land use on a key street segment. I just want to make sure that that's understood.
So just to clarify, special land use means anyone owning a property couldn't just start doing it, they would have to come forward?
They would have to go through the whole approval process with you guys.
If we did do it in our two, anybody could do it on a, on there, if we just go with special uses.
But it still makes it very hard, once you set the precedent for the next guy to come in, and the next guy after that to come in to be able to say yea or nay. That's my concern, is that...
Right, we would have the ultimate say, though.
True, but I think now we basically have a lot, it's much safer to look at it on an individual basis rather than opening up all the key streets.
But even opening it up for all the key streets, they would still have to go through the approval process. Isn't that what I heard, Katie, or no?
No.
Yes, that is correct. They would, he's requesting to add an automobile repair facility as a special land use that requires key street frontage in the R2 district.
So by changing key street frontage, that doesn't mean that everybody can do it?
Only if you're located on the key streets, and I did pull up the zoning map, too, so that we could reference this. So we have key streets running through Washington and Maple, down First, Maple to Fourth Street, down First Street, so everything that you see south of First Street there in the yellow, and then down through kind of Maxwell Town, but close to, you know, the industrial areas, and then half of 12th Street there, or I'm sorry, that's not 12th Street.
A lot of it follows the old original highway through town.
Marlene?
I have no problem with it being where it's located if we keep it under a special use permit, because you've got Morton Salt and all the bar and other business right there, and it's key located there, so I don't find a problem with anything else. I would want to keep going back through the whole neighborhood, but I think keeping it on the key street is good.
Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I'll open it up for public comment on Z-23-05. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comment on this, please come to the podium, name an address, please. Nothing, okay. We'll move to the discussion. Back to Bob.
I think we should just stick with a special use for this and not change the whole zoning district at all, just...
Stay with a special land use.
Special land use, stick with that, not change the R2 district.
I agree. I think there's, there's still plenty of property available when you're talking about the key on C Streets, right? C District is already, that is authorized use, correct?
Yes, I think I included in the memo that I had put together for you guys where it is, so currently an automobile repair facility exists as an allowable use in the C1, C2, and LI zoning districts. I can't remember exactly. It's a permitted use in two of them and a special, and I think it's a special use in C2, but it is allowable in those three districts under the current zoning ordinance.
I think there's, you know, again, plenty of opportunity already, and then, like I said, we could look at individual areas depending on the property and location and what's around it.
Very good. Pam?
I agree with the two gentlemen to my right. I am very hesitant to change anything in the R2 district right now. I think a special land use permit would be the better way to go with...
I do want to make sure that the commission understands that currently it is not an allowable use in R2, and what he is asking for is to have it be an allowable use as a special land use that requires key street frontage in the R2. So right now, it is not allowed, period, in R2, but what he's requesting is for it to be allowed as a special land use.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused.
What we're looking for is maybe to change, or this word, can be allowed under a special use.
Right, so currently it is not allowed as a permitted use, it is not allowed as a special land use, it is not identified as a use that is allowed in that district. What he's proposing is to add it as a special land use, but only when you're on a key street segment.
Okay.
And the key streets were the blue streets on the map.
So ultimately, we have the say to grant or deny.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Shelley?
Just so I understand, because I believe I understood it correctly to begin with, so the amendment would have to be made in order for him to move forward.
Correct.
Got it.
Marlene?
I see no problem with trying to put this as a special use, to amend that for a special...
Special land use. Anything else?
Hey, I didn't realize that we couldn't just look at that specific property. We would have to look at, now, could we segment it even further, or does it have to be all or nothing?
It would be all or nothing. The only other real options under the zoning ordinance that allow for, you know, something similar, we have the adaptive reuse use in the zoning ordinance, which to an extent could be used for if it was a gas station and now is an automobile repair facility. So that's one scenario where you can allow for uses that don't exactly exist. I would have to double back and see if that's currently an allowable use in the R2, and then planned unit developments are really the only other instance where, you know, you have the, the Planning Commission has the authority to potentially grant uses that aren't identified in that district. Short of that, you know, we don't, it has to either apply to the whole district or not, and we don't necessarily want to call out, you know, you guys are familiar with spot zoning. I think in this instance, it does abut an industrial district if that was supported by the future land use map or justified. You know, that is another potential route that could, you could go, but that wasn't what was requested by the applicant. But yeah, it's either allowed as a use in the district or not, and under a special land use, the Planning Commission has the authority and control to dictate, you know, your conditions through the standards, and you guys have, you know, the authority through those standards to decide if this is a compatible use for even surrounding uses, because that's another layer of the special land use approval. You know, we, we want to see this use in this district, but only under given circumstances. If there was something that was not, was a blatant not compatible use that was going to be adjacent to it, you know, hypothetically, that might be a scenario where you could say, mm, we really don't think this special land use is going to go well with the surrounding uses. So kind of, that's kind of the idea.
Now, would, in this particular case, would an adaptive reuse be something that could be worked because it was a gas station and full-service gas station prior?
I would want to look into that further before making any real determination. That was just, you know, an idea, the only other times in the zoning ordinance where you may be able to, the Planning Commission may have the authority to allow for uses that don't exist in a district. I would need a little bit more background and time to look that over to make that determination. I'm not just saying that it couldn't happen, but I'm, I would have to double-check the ordinance to see if we even have adaptive reuse in the R2, which I think we do, now that I'm thinking about it, because we had that other First Street property come forward. But yeah, that, that could potentially be a scenario for this, this particular property.
Looking at the proposed ordinance you gave us, it actually does spell out automobile repair facility as a special land use. So that kind of nails it down there, that it has to be a special land use.
And Katie, might you know how long the language has existed currently in its current form, and then how many requests for this specific special use have come forward?
That, I don't know. I would imagine that the automobile, I'd have to dive into the ordinance and see, like, the annotations, if there has been any amendments as it relates to automobile repair facility. I personally have not gotten any requests in my time with, you know, for automobile repair facilities at all, actually, no.
But with certain requests for it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's one of those things that, you know, but with having it in there, that people have the option, so, yeah.
I can think of two or three other places along that key street routes through there, like on 12th Street, there's an old, where there's an old gas station used to be, but it's now a house, but that was originally a gas station along there, you know, by the storage units, by 12, by old Hardy Salt.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that used to be a gas station in there, and they had a repair shop in it.
Does that date back to when it was the original highway?
When it was original highway, yeah, because there was two or three gas stations along the old original highway through there.
Okay. We will tackle this in discussion, okay. Is that all? Commissioner? 7:25, close that public hearing. Move along to special land use request, PUD for the Gateway Project. It is 7:24, or 7:25, excuse me.
Yes, so we received a request for a planned unit development, what we're referring to as the Gateway, and this is for, I'm just trying to get to my public hearing notice here, if I put it in here. Oh, I've got it here, okay. So this is for, what they are proposing is a 90-room residential condo hotel complex with amenities, including but not limited to a conference center, restaurant, and heritage center. The building on the south side of River Street is proposed to be a mixed-use building, including commercial and retail space, residential apartments, and a parking structure. You guys received the narrative, the addendum to the narrative. We received two written comments that were provided via email, well, technically three, but one of them was from the same person. So you guys received all of those, and then we do have several representatives on behalf of the development here to speak more on this for you guys.
All right. So representatives for the Gateway Project, please come to the podium.
Good evening, TF Taxiades for Little River Holdings.
Do you want it on here?
No.
On here?
Yeah, perfect. With me tonight is our architect, Mike Corby, and our engineer, Shane Brennan from Spicer. I want to make a few comments about the project, and then Mike can go into detail, more detail, about the design of the project, why, and so on. What you see in this PUD submiddle is a concept that has evolved in the last... Pardon? Oh.
I just can't see the screen.
In the last year, this concept plan is the original vision that we had for redeveloping this portion of the downtown, being the entrance to the downtown. Last year, you, there was approval for a chain hotel and a surface parking lot in, on the same property. What we have put together in the last several months is, it takes into consideration the concepts that were presented in 2018 as part of the MSU River Street Streetscape Study. It also reflects our understanding, experience with the needs of the community in this portion of the downtown, and to come up with the design, the size of the buildings, the number of condominium units and apartments, we took the last several months to reevaluate current economic conditions. So as related to the condominium hotel, this is going to be a 90-unit condo hotel where the individual units will be owned privately, and they will be available for, to operate as a hotel through a hotel operation company that we are going to employ and put in place. We had an updated hospitality study in this last year. and put in place. We had an updated hospitality study in this last year that resulted in a decision to build ninety units, because that size of operation is necessary to make it financially feasible. And in order to also accommodate a restaurant, rooftop bar, and all of the other amenities, including the conference center, we had to go into a five-story building, which triggered the need for going through the PUD process. The apartments on the south side of the property, on the west and east side of, either side of the parking deck, we have forty-seven market rate rental units, apartments. And this number was generated following a survey that we did last year of the major employers in the area, manufacturing, health, and others, and to see what are the needs for their staff, and, and also how many people, how many staff they're losing, or they cannot recruit because of the lack of suitable housing. That survey identified about fifty-five units. We are creating forty-seven units, apartments. But we also added eight townhouses to operate as work-live units, and that on River Street. And this addition was the result of a number of informal discussions we had with a number of people in the community. We had some concerns about having a parking deck, three, four-story parking deck facing River Street. And we took those comments into consideration, and we added the eight townhouses. Then behind the townhouses, between the two apartment buildings, mixed-use and residential building, and then above the townhouses, we put the parking deck. The parking deck is going to have about a hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifteen parking spaces. About twenty-five, twenty-seven parking spaces will have entrance from River Street, and then the remaining will be, will be coming from Division Street, and they will go up and around in three more levels. The number of parking spaces is quite a bit more than we're required by code. Code requires that we have one parking space per each condominium unit, so ninety. And we have two hundred and fifteen. In discussions with the planners, and I believe it's part of the recommendation of the planner to you, we're going to have another fifty parking spaces allocated, assigned for employees of the hotel and the commercial spaces, the offices in the mixed-use building on thirty-one, as well as for people attending conferences in the conference center. And that will also leave more parking spaces that could be, or will make available for public use. The facades of the buildings and the material used that Mike Corby will discuss are, so that they are sympathetic to the historic district. This property is outside the historic district, but it's close. So we want to be sympathetic to the architecture, to the, the colors in the buildings in our district, and also respectful of tribal native elements. I know there are a number of questions, but before we do that, I would like to have Mike talk about the basis for design, including the view corridors that we're trying to establish, and how we're treating the entrance to the downtown. So, Mike?
Good evening. Mike Corby with Integrated Architecture, Eight Forty Auto, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm gonna need Katie to toggle through. I'll just try to go through quickly, maybe highlight a few more points on the program, then I'll talk a little, little bit about the planning strategies that we looked at for, you know, positioning the architecture on the sites, and then I'll talk a little bit about the architecture. But just to kind of add a little bit to what T had brought up, the north parcel, which is on the river, as well as on River Street, will have ninety condo hotel units with balconies. There'll be a restaurant, kind of on the main level. And if you're familiar with that property, it, it cascades down to the river. There's about a seventeen-foot drop from River Street down to the River Walk itself. The restaurant will be on that, on the, the primary level. There'll be a lounge bar on the upper level that will also kind of face toward both the north and to the west. The event center that T mentioned will be at the lower level, so it'll be basically on the River Walk level. If you could go to the next. So these plans start to show those levels. The main level is going to be very, what you'd expect for a condominium or condo hotel. It's going to have hotel-like services when it is being used for transient use, so there'll be a breakfast area, as well as kind of other accommodations for, you know, checking in and things like that. In addition to that, on the corner, and I'll talk about the planning in a second, on the corner, basically on the southeast side of the site, on the corner of the highway and River Street, will be what is going to be a heritage venue, which will be basically a public space that'll showcase local history as well as tribal history, and they're planning to be kind of this interactive, almost museum-type space. Other amenities that'll be on-site, primarily for resident usage, there'll be a fitness center, a pool area that, right now, it's looked at to be an indoor/outdoor pool, and that'll be on the, basically call it the River Walk level, as well as spa. We'll have laundry services, similar to what you'd have in a hotel, and obviously some storage. So the, the building, as, as T mentioned, because of some of the land planning decisions we made, the building is five stories. Other than the main level, the, the primary four stories will be rooms, with the exception of the bar on the rooftop. If you could go to the next slide, please. Continue. So the south parcel, as we mentioned, it's kind of three primary components. The east building will be a four-story building. The grade level will be commercial uses, so fronting the highway as well as river will be commercial uses. We have eight work-live units, which we actually were, we have a lot of examples of the work-live concept here in Manistee, where you've got commercial operations happening on a main level with living above them. So we also are looking at them potentially, in some of the stipulations, to be just urban, urban townhouses. The, the west building will be basically primarily apartments, but on the corner of Division, remember, we have a commercial operation space there, commercial lease space there, that's about eleven hundred square feet. So we wanted to kind of keep the activated uses along the streetscape. And then, as T mentioned, kind of behind it, not real visible, but accessible, will be the parking structure, which will be two and a half stories, and that will have two hundred and fifteen spaces. And then the total, as T mentioned, there'll be thirty apartments in the west building, and seventeen apartments in the east building, along with the commercial space at grade, and then there'll be some office space on the fourth level, as well as one additional apartment. On the land, let's, can you, if you could go back-
Go back, okay.
To, sorry, go back to the, right there. So I want to talk a little bit about the land planning. This is a very important site. It's a gateway site. It's, it's connecting to the urban, you know, the historic district to the west, but it's an entry point. And so we looked at a lot of different ways to kind of place architecture on the properties. And I think what we came up with was a combination of using the architecture, but also kind of open space to kind of visually draw you into this corridor. So obviously, the north building, kind of, I think I used the term in the narrative, it's almost kind of like hands that open up and try to, you know, welcome you in better. So we've got some outdoor park space right on the corner, which would be basically right outside the heritage venue, which will be activated. The, that site itself will also have, obviously, a drop-off area for check-in. There will not be any long-term parking on that site. There, there are four spaces that'll be available just for temporary use as you're checking in or checking out. The, the other aspect of it, it's also the gateway to the river. Right now, that site had a stairway that was on the north side of the, the old restaurant pad. We're actually looking at doing a university-accessible pathway that's along the east side of our property. We've been working in conjunction with MDOT to figure out what the final solution of that is, but basically it'll be a university-accessible pathway that goes all the way from the southeast corner of our property to the River Walk. The south property, you can see even on the east side, we've kind of not taken the building right to the property line, so that is you're kind of northbound on US thirty-one. You kind of get this little glimpse, and it starts to open up and invite you kind of into the corridor, as well as, you know, as you're coming from the, from the northbound. So we really wanted to use this as a way to kind of, you know, welcome you, invite you in, and also keep the activation at the grade levels. The, the site allows us to kind of have a lot of activities at the river's level, so that's why we've taken a lot of the amenities, as well as some of the, like the event center, and kind of dropped that down to the river level. So again, I think one of the things that is wonderful is when you've got kind of activities at the River Walk elevation, and we're, we're trying to do that with both the activity center, as well as a terrace that'll have the pool, potentially an outdoor terrace, or an outdoor bar as well. The, as I mentioned, the garage, the parking garage is basically hidden. In our, in, in planning terms, it's called basically kind of a liner building, which you get the both, best of both worlds. You hide kind of the, the cars, and then you kind of activate the street with uses. So the, the two buildings that are bookending that particular site, as well as the townhouses, are providing kind of that nice activation of the street front for pedestrian use. Parking access, the primary parking access into the garage is from Division. And again, that was intentional. We just, we didn't want a lot of congestion on river, especially cars coming off of the highway, so we intentionally kind of put that primary access to the west. There is a small twenty-seven car parking surface lot that's basically behind, call it the, the mixed-use building on the east, that would have an access point from, from River Street. So let's go to the, keep going to the architecture. So I want to just talk briefly about the architecture.
Here, the next one.
This one's fine to start with. The, we really looked at materials. The buildings would predominantly be familiar materials, brick. Our, our goal was to really incorporate materials that are predominant in the city. It's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a new building, it's a fresh building, it's a modern building, but I think we wanted to kind of respect the heritage by, the detailing will be a combination of some more historically-influenced window shapes, as well as, as T mentioned, we really want to bring some of the heritage of the tribe in with just some of the colors, you know, that represent some of the natural, you know, earth and water and other natural influences to pay homage in that respect, but provide a nice distinctive building, provide a, a building that has a lot of kind of familiar materials, one that really pays attention to details, like a lot of the historic buildings in the city, but is fresh, and, and really starts to become a, an interest, an interesting gateway into the city. So if you want to continue through, we've got some of the renderings that show some of the, continue there. So this is, the top view there is, if you're northbound on the highway coming in, you can see how, as I mentioned, kind of the, by the architecture kind of coming away from the edges of the property a little bit, it, it opens up, and it, and it really kind of invites you into, onto River Street. You can see the, the, the current gateway is, is still in place there. In the bottom left picture, you can see, we've got a lot of different views that this building will have, from southbound on the highway, from, we want to capture you from northbound on the highway, if you're on a boat on the river, as well as if you're on River Street. So we've really kind of taken a lot of care and trying to make sure that the building has great presentation from all, from all viewpoints, as well as kind of is, is that inviting gateway into the, into the district. So you see that lower middle one there is basically looking due west, so it kind of opens up into west, towards the, the historic business district. Shane Brennan is also here from Spicer. He's been working very closely with, with the city engineering to just make sure that the infrastructure that's there will support what we're doing, as well as the design of the new systems is, is done per code and things like that. So if we've got specific questions on that, I know that we've gotten comments back from some of the city apartments, and we're well aware of, you know, addressing anything that comes up. So we're, we're excited, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Jane?
Are there any questions?
Well, let's, I'd like to have everybody go through, and then we can discuss, so.
So I'm here with the, the engineering firm. Our main objective with this was just to make sure that the season infrastructure is, would work with the buildings, with the designs they've got. We've gone through the process. I've worked with the city on this to confirm that the systems will handle it. We've looked at the stormwater runoff to make sure that we're not increasing anything coming off the site. We've talked about some water quality structures, to be able to clean the water up before its outlet to the system. So mainly, that was what our, our role was in this process.
Any, any others, T?
I can answer any questions?
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I've got some. Looking through the preliminary plans you provided us, I'm seeing all the utilities in our nails. I'm not seeing anything for, I know you guys did a preliminary brownfield stuff. I'm, a little bit of stuff you did on it, but before, but I'm worried about stability of the land there, because we've been from one-story buildings to a five-story building, and we're on a riverbank. I was concerned with the same thing on the Hampton, that's why I asked for soil data, that's why they gave me, that's why I finally got from them the soilborne, and the plans for how they're going to support the building. That's my biggest concern. And what you guys have presented so far, I haven't seen anything there. But that's the only major thing that concerns me, is I've been on many engineering and building projects where they've been under it, underbuilt, and I've seen buildings collapse. So that's-
I can address that. What you're seeing here is the conceptual plans.
Right.
As you know, the property is contaminated. There were some prelimin- limited, and we are currently under the grant and loan that was awarded to the city through Eagle. We're in the process of designing, and we expect to have approval to proceed within about a week, for designing additional environmental investigations, because depending on the levels and types of contamination on various portions of the property, we're going to have to design remediation and engineering controls. Things like, as you know, the south, southeast portion of the property had the dry cleaners, we have some volatile organics, dry cleaning fluids, relatively low concentrations, but of concern, and of course, one of the concerns is that the vapors slowly are moving up into the enclosed spaces. So, the investigation that we're going to be starting on August 14 will be addressing all of the environmental conditions, so that we can design appropriate engineering controls in pretty much all of the buildings. On the north side, for example, we're going to be excavating about twelve thousand yards, cubic yards of soil. We expect that quite a bit of that volume is going to be contaminated, it will have to go into a landfill. So, but we do not have that information yet, but regardless, we will have to incorporate engineering controls throughout the property. In addition to that, as you mentioned, and we know that the north side, most of the north side of, I'm sorry, the south side of the river, the bank, is for the most part, fill material, from sawdust to slug to fly ash, and the preliminary borings that were done at the former House of Flavors property, show that we have unstable soils there. Well, the investigations that we're going to undertake in two weeks, as well as the geotechnical studies, we're, we're going to have to do geotechnical borings, and most likely, based on what I have seen so far, and what I've seen in other parts of, of River Street, we're going to have to put some deep foundations. So, all of those issues will be addressed as part of the final engineering plans. This is not the intent right now. The intent is to look at the exterior, the site, for the purpose of the PUD, but there is a lot of work to be done still, a lot of engineering studies, a lot of, a lot of designs for electric plumbing, HVAC, fire suppression, the solar system, you know, all of those things. So, you will be, the final plans, the, and the S-bill plans will be part of the record, because I believe that's one of the stipulations.
Nick?
Couple. The first concern that I have, actually, I love the design, I think it's, it's, it's going to be a very nice asset for our community, but I am concerned about pedestrians. I see that the only walkway you currently have for pedestrians is the existing walkway off of 31. Being a, a regular walker in Manistee, I know how dangerous that intersection is right now. It is extremely dangerous. And I think that having as much traffic that you're talking about, from the parking garage, as well as the hotel, that you, we really need to address parking, or, not parking, but a walkway somewhere other than on that corner. People making lefts and right-hand turns, you know, we also have to look at the future, that the other side of River Street is going to be developed, and is developing as we speak, there's going to be a lot more cross-traffic, and I, I, I really think that we would be doing a disservice to the community if we didn't make some very conscious decisions on how we're going to move pedestrians on foot, from one end to the other.
I agree with you, and as a matter of fact, part of the, our concept here is to build apartments for people to live downtown. I mean, we're going to be bringing with forty-seven apartments, plus eight townhouses, work-life units, that's fifty-five. If you assume that the average occupancy is going to be one and a quarter, one point two-five people, we're going to have a lot of people living down there. Well, that's the idea. We, we want to promote that, we want activity downtown, we've been saying this for years. So, we do, and also, at the north building, the amenities at the lower level, the spa, the exercise room, all of those, those will be also available to the tenants on the south side of the apartments. Therefore, we expect there will be, and the restaurant, there will be a lot of traffic going back and forth. So, yes, there will be at least two crosswalks, as a matter of fact, both DPW, Jeff and the city manager have brought that up, and that's going to be one of the stipulations that, that Katie has put together. In addition to that, as you know, the DDA is going through a streetscape study, and we have preliminarily met with them, we've talked about it. However, we have a timing issue, in that the DDA's plan is not going to be ready until end of the year mark, or sometime like that, the DDA, the streetscape, whereas, we need to start with the planning, in order to get the finance, in order to go through the brownfield process. So, a lot of these additional requirements will be incorporated, but we're very well aware of it. As a matter of fact, both the city manager and the DPW are asking that we put crosswalks. Mike, what's the correct term for the, the crosswalks?
High visibility.
High visibility, I guess they have some lights and so on, yeah.
I got it, something just came to my mind. Any thought been given to a skyway, above the second floor over to the parking structure?
Yes. The answer is no. Well, I know that it's been brought up in the past-
That would take care of a lot of-
Well, there are a number of issues associated with that. It is a major cost. Secondly, there is maintenance issues, and we would rather see more enhanced ways, crosswalks, than doing that. We also have looked, talked about doing an underground, a tunnel. However, there are so many utilities, that again, it's not feasible, yeah.
There's stuff down there that they don't even notice they're on there.
I know, yeah.
Couple, you know, speaking of the utilities, do we have a utility phased construction plan, so that we can manage traffic going in and out of River Street during the construction phases, especially when you're going to be working down the road, or going across?
Oh, yeah. Not yet. We have engaged a construction manager, who will be bidding out the construction, and as part of the contract we have with them, they will have to do a number of plans, traffic plans, health and safety plans, that all will have to be reviewed by city personnel. But, the idea is to keep the, any disturbance or any interference with the downtown as little as possible. Then, related to that, the project will be done in sequence, it's not going to be phased, but will sequence what buildings are constructed first and second, in order to provide, in order to not disturb the traffic on River Street, but also to have staging areas for equipment, supplies, and so on, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And the other is, and I'm sure you've looking at it, and, and actually, I don't know that it's a terrible problem, because of the way everything is designed, but reflections on 31, especially if you look at the one photograph, you can kind of see, if you're coming across the bridge, how there may be some reflection issues. And I know in other cities, they've had problems after they've been built, where you're blinded as you're, as you're coming across an intersection, and I just-
Yeah.
Just want to, hopefully, that somebody's already making sure-
Actually, we, yeah, Mike, can you address that? Because there is a lighting plan that was part of the package, I believe.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that as well. The one thing that this doesn't show as well, there's some actual, it's actually a design detail, it's kind of these curved vertical elements that kind of represent water a little bit, that are going to help with that, but also, the type of glass we use can help mitigate some of that. We definitely have talked about that.
Right, thank you.
And it helps that it's on the north side, where the sun's not so, at that right angle, so bad either.
The only other, this is a minor, we're just, but, but out of curiosity, more than anything, is the parking garage primarily going to be established as a pay-for parking?
Yes.
In other words, going to be controlled, where you're going to get a ticket, and you're either a resident, and somebody stamps it, or you're going to pay to get in and out?
Yes, sir. Maybe not, maybe not a ticket, but maybe more electronic, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I like your plans. My initial reaction to the north side of the hotel, I thought it was a little industrial, but it, it's kind of growing on me. My husband liked it, so that's-
That's what comes.
I know, it makes life easier. I like the fact that you're thinking of maybe putting some boat slips on the river. I like that idea.
Yep.
I also like the idea that we talked about previously, about maybe having a, a basic grocery store there, area, or the, I like that idea.
It will be available for lease.
You laugh, my husband's family used to run a grocery store.
There we go.
But I, I really-
We sure have some ideas about what we need in that corner. However, we're not prepared at this point-
Oh, I know.
-speculate, but I'm very aware of that need.
Yeah, we, we definitely have a little bit of a need there, but-
Yeah.
Overall, I, I really am pleased with the project that you guys-
Thank you.
...come up with.
Shelley?
I'm impressed. Anybody that's sat with me here knows I like scene development, so I, I love the project, I love the way that it looks. I hope that you can get started sooner than later. I did have a point, is it Mike? Just a point of clarification, I heard you say that that easternmost building will have commercial space of about eleven hundred square feet, and the drawing says it's about six thousand?
No, the, the eastern building, easterly building's going to be more at six, eleven hundred-
Sorry, west.
-was the corner on Division.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's going to be a small space. Actually, initially, it was going to be an apartment, but given the location-
I flipped it.
...and the visibility from two streets, we thought that a small retail would be good there. Again, we have some thoughts about what should go there, but the market will-
Yes, market will do that.
Nice little grocery store, sounds really good.
Yeah.
And a pharmacy, that's-
With a walking distance, so it would be good.
Grocery pharmacy, because we're, we're missing a pharmacy on our walkway.
The, I, I don't know that this is planned out yet, but what is the expected timeline, if you have one?
Expected what?
Timeline.
Well, if I, tonight, this, this action is one of the first steps as related to the involvement of the city. We still have to deal with the brownfield planning process. We also are starting, well, we're more than starting, but we have been talking with MEDC about some funding, because some of the components of this project is the parking, that financially cannot support themselves. So, the MEDC has already indicated that they were assist with that. If everything goes as smoothly as I hope it will, we're looking at starting next spring.
Okay, and how long do you anticipate the construction?
Oh, um, in the, in the PUD application, we have put thirty-six months. A lot is going to depend, we hope it's going to be faster than that. A lot is going to depend on availability of contractors, and also the supply chains, especially the electric. Already, our construction manager has been talking with suppliers of primarily electrical equipment, elevators, those are the, they have kind of long lead time, so.
Is that construction manager a matter of public record?
Yeah, it's a company called Cunningham Lim.
Cunningham, okay.
I've worked with them for a number of years on large redevelopment projects, they're very experienced, and they're going to have, of course, dedicated people working, you know, being here all the time, to manage all of the contractors and subcontractors.
And when you said that the buildings would be sequenced, I'm, I'm assuming a couple are dependent on each other, so the hotel and residential and the parking?
Actually, it's going to be the, in order to have the hotel operating, we have to have the parking, because we are required to have ninety parking spaces. So, the parking deck and the condos will be constructed, will start with those, and as soon as the parking deck is constructed enough, that can be used as staging area, then they can start working on the two-side buildings.
So, south start-
They can use the parking structure as staging for equipment and supplies.
So, the south will start first and migrate out from there?
It actually would be the, the north side and the parking, followed by, but overlapping with the, with the other two buildings.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Marlene?
Yeah, the facilities that you will have in the hotel, restaurants, spas and stuff, is that open to the public, or strictly for the hotel?
Oh, absolutely, the public.
Okay, and the parking-
Yeah, the hotel guests cannot support the-
Right.
...the, the restaurants during the winter.
Yeah, and the parking structure, is that open to the public, or strictly for the residents?
Well, the ninety spaces plus fifty- Well, the 90 spaces plus 50 will be dedicated to the hotel, the condos, and the other uses, and then we'll have additional space for public.
And how much space does that?
That will be, so 215 minus 130, so 70, 85.
That's a good amount. I hope that, like you said, the traffic through there is going to be really bad, that there'll be no parking on the street. You get down a little east to like Oakham Strands or the Bluefish, so that people getting in out of cars and traffic coming through will be a little safer through there?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, DPW, just saw it today, they asked how many parallel parking spaces we'll have, and we have not really calculated that. But currently, between the south side, there are like six entrances, because remember, there were all those businesses. So we have six entrances there, and then two on the north side. So right there, there are eight parking, parallel parking spaces that we gain. On the other hand, we're going to be losing some by the entrance to the condo hotel. So I cannot tell you exactly how many, but we'll address that, because that was one of the questions that came up. But again, we're creating so much additional parking that will more than offset the couple spots we're going to lose at the hotel entrance.
Okay, Marlene?
Good.
Okay. Well, you answered one of my questions on the Riverwalk access, because in the, in the preliminary drawings, it wasn't there. It was missed. Just, it, it was noted.
Actually, it was done on purpose, because again, we, we don't want to incorporate design, streetscape elements before the, we have the streetscape study by the DDA, because we don't want to start doing anything that would not be compatible with what they come up with. And we will have some time to, to incorporate some of their, their elements. But as related to the crosswalks, no, we have, we only kept the old one, the existing one, but there will have to be more anyway.
Sure. Okay. And just to clarify a question from Marlene, on the use of the restaurant and the amenities, the spa, I would assume, I shouldn't assume, but the restaurant will be, restaurant bar will be open to the public?
Yes, the restaurant and the rooftop lounge will be open to the public. The, the amenities, and the, the pool and the spa and so on, on the lower level, would be available to, yeah, right there down the bottom left, will be available to the condo owners, to the hotel guests, and to the tenants on the south side, on the two residential buildings and the townhouses.
Okay, not to the public, which makes perfect sense.
Not at this point.
Okay.
We have to wait and see what the use may be.
Yeah.
I mean, for one thing, they're pretty small.
Okay.
If someone wants to put similar type of facility on the commercial space on the mixed-use building.
That's, that's an idea.
And we talked about that, too.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is the, and you mentioned that MEDC is, is mixed into this in the funding, probably for the parking garage. Is the remaining buildings, is it fully funded now, or are we?
You mean funded by the state or?
Is, is the project funded?
We're working on it, no. I mean, we actually, having the PUD approval, if you approve it, is one of the things that financial institutions want to see. But we have already, of course, been talking with financial institutions, banks. This is all going to be funded through Little River Holdings LLC. It's not a tribe-funded project.
Okay. And building, the, the sequence of building this project out, parking garage, hotel, is that, are the condos going up first and then the hotel, or is it together, going up together?
Well, the, the building is, I mean, those units that you see over there, those are all condominiums, individual condominium, condo units. They're going to be one bedroom, it will be large suites and some small suites. Those are all going to be privately owned condominiums, so there will be 90 tax parcels plus few others. Those will be available to the hotel pool. So on the first floor of the building is the hotel operation, and the hotel operation will be running the rentals of those units. So the individual owners will decide when to make them available for rent or keep them themselves. We do expect that the vast majority will be placed in the hotel pool.
Okay. But, so the, the building itself will go up as one false, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Katie, do we have a timeline that we could show everyone?
Mick, I think, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On the drawings, we had, the drawings we reviewed last week, there was a timeline.
Timeline thing.
Timeline graph.
Civil sheets.
Oh.
Put back to our ways.
Just to give the audience a general idea of what's going on.
Down toward the end.
Was it towards the end?
Yeah.
The general, this one?
Oh.
Oh, right here, okay, yes. Uh huh.
The 36, okay. Okay. We'll get through it. So T, could you run through that for us, please?
A little too close, sorry. I could run through it a few, I might be able to see a little bit better on this one.
I'm looking at the, when we start and when we finish.
Yeah, just general.
So we're looking at, yeah, March, or actually, May, June is when we expect to start dealing with things. Now, removals, demolitions are going to be minor, because already the buildings have been demolished. So what we talk about demolition here is removing some leftover foundations, paving, pavement, and prepare the site, clearing. Those will happen pretty much together, and then, starting in mid next year, then the actual construction will start.
Everybody good with that? Now Mick, you have a question?
Just curious, on the, on the 90 condos, is Little River Holding Company planning on, on actually buying some of those condos to, to have full-time in the inventory, or are all 90 of them going to be open and available to the?
Well, no, we're going to face the sales of the condos. We want to make sure that we have enough condo units available for the hotel operation in order to make it successful.
Right.
And so we may end up selling some upfront, and then every year, over a period of five years, sell additional units. But Little River Holdings intends to keep, if not most, a good part, a good percentage of those condos.
The only reason why I ask is to make sure there was still availability during the summertime, that everyone.
Yes.
The 90 condo owners all come and say, well, I went July and August.
Yeah, no, the, the contracts, when some of these units are sold, are going to have some requirements for putting their condos into the hotel operation, yeah. And, and actually, the reason for the 90 units is that if we assume that 80 of them are in the pool, or 10 of them are not in the pool, we need to have at least about 75 units to make the hotel operation. So, yeah, we're going to be managing this, or, yeah.
And then the only other thing is, in the, there was no numbers for the restaurant or the bar as far as seating. There was in the conference banquet room, but I didn't see any kind of specifics, and I didn't see any kind of individual layout, kind of what the condo rooms layout is going to look like. Is that something that we can expect relatively soon?
Yes, well, first, the, the restaurant, at this point, we have created space for the restaurant. The actual configuration of that space is going to depend on the, on the restaurant operation and their needs.
Okay.
Now, the, the condo units, yeah, what you've seen right now, it's an allocation of some space, and some of them are going to get a little larger, some are going to be smaller. As a matter of fact, as part of the request under the PUD, is that we're allowed to, to adjust the number by about 15%? Because we may end up with more smaller units, depending on how Mike configures the units. You want to address that anymore?
Yeah. We, we haven't engaged the restaurant yet, so again, it's, it's a use. The rooftop area is going to be a smaller, call it year-round indoor space, but obviously during times like now, it'll open up. And we are in the process of looking at the condo hotel model, where some of the units, you know, might be a two-bedroom, but it might be that you can actually rent each bedroom individually as a hotel room. So the plan is, at least right now through Little River, is that they will operate like a condo, so they'll have a kitchenette in them, and you'll be able to use it as a condo, but they're hoping that a lot of the transient use will, you know, go to the restaurant or walk downtown and things like that. So it's, it's really set up to be a hotel, but individuals may be able to purchase them. So we're, we're in the middle of that, and I think because we, we've been talking about maybe having some of these two bedrooms that are actually, quote-unquote, maybe two units, we might want some flexibility in the number. Thank you.
Katie, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but I'm going to ask it anyway. For the hotel and the parking, can they be put together on one property description?
That would be something that we'd have to look a little bit more into if we wanted to like tie them via the tax ID, but there, you guys do have the authority to like stipulate that through the special use permit, so we have that control measure. I might have to do a little bit more research if we want to take it a step further. My initial thoughts are something like a deed restriction, but having the tax IDs combined could be an option as well. But the special use permit itself could control that through a stipulation, that the parking structure must always be tied to the condo hotel and provide parking to the condo hotel.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? None? Okay. We will move along to.
Public.
Public comment.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So if there's anyone in the audience that has a comment, please come to the podium, name and address. We have up to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Diardio, 82 Lake Street, Manistee. Appreciate the opportunity to provide my comments and questions in regards to the Gateway Project. Our property is 82 Lake Street, which is directly behind the south side of the proposed development on River Street. I have the following comments, questions, and concerns. If the following structures, the Gateway mixed-use building, the Gateway parking, and Gateway residential buildings are planned to be four stories, what is the expected impact to the properties that are immediately south of this development on the north side of Lake Street? What is the approximate height of the four-story structures above the property level of the backyards of 82 Lake Street and the Christian Faith Church at the corner of Division and Lake Street? Will the existing trees on the north side of Lake Street be impacted during the construction? Will any type of barrier be built between the development and the Lake Street properties? Will any landscaping be added to this area? And what about the retaining wall structures of this area between the project and the north side of Lake Street? Will new retaining walls be put into place? Often, the backside of commercial buildings are seriously lacking in the area of design and appeal. If the south sides of the Gateway mixed-use building, the Gateway parking, and Gateway residential building will be visitable from Lake Street, Division Street, and Cypress Street, will their design take this visibility under, under consideration? What section of the Gateway Project is considered the priority? The hotel? When is the project scheduled for full completion? What happens to this section of River Street should the Gateway Project further stall schedule-wise, or be reduced in scale or scope? If Phase 2 is delayed well beyond the hotel completion, will any effort be made to even temporarily address the appearance of the south side of River Street? How many additional parcels or properties are being considered for the purchase for the Gateway Project? What are the locations of these properties? What are the planned uses for the potential real estate additions? And what does this do to the scope of the project regarding budget and timeline? If one of the goals is to provide additional housing, has the Gateway Project team considered creating apartments along Memorial Drive, the previous Save-A-Lot location? Apartments along with reestating a small grocery store along Memorial Drive would surely serve our community well. Thank you kindly for addressing my questions and concerns.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
My name is Dan Wiersma. I have a company called Oxford Partners. We're in Grand Rapids, and the question might be asked, why would a guy from Grand Rapids be coming up to Manistee to attend a meeting like this? Mostly because for the last 35 years, our family has had a place in Arcadia, and so we've been making this trick through Manistee for a long, long time, and I think for a lot of people who live here probably don't appreciate a lot of what's going on in Manistee right now. Manistee is showing up on the radar screen of a lot of people along the lakeshore right now, and with what's gone on with the Hampton Inn, what's gone on, and with the Meyer, just a lot of things happening in Manistee. There's just a lot of very bullish constructive activity going on. And from that perspective, the other aspect is that I'm a real estate, commercial real estate investment company. And I also have a investment in Manistee, in that in 2014, our company actually acquired the remaining undeveloped portion of Harbor Village. So we have been watching with great interest what's been going on in Manistee. We're very encouraged by what we see in Manistee, and I just wanted to make sure that this group of people and the community had a real appreciation for what Little River Holdings is doing here. I mean, this, this scope of this project in a community like Manistee is, is quite remarkable. And when you think about, from a real estate investment perspective, they could be doing, creating housing, and they could be creating additional hotels on property they already own, except for the fact that they're making a commitment to engage. already own, except for the fact that they're making a commitment to engage in a huge project with impact in Manistee that has remarkable ripple effects for downtown Manistee. And I just want to encourage you to look at it. I, I look at it from an investor's perspective, you look at it from a planning perspective, they look at it from a developer perspective, people look at it from a zoning perspective, neighbors look at it from a neighboring perspective. So I think it's important that you look at it from all the different perspectives, uh, when you're considering the application that they're making for this project. And I can tell you for one, as a investor in Manistee, and we've been here since two thousand fourteen, uh, as a, uh, having a family property up in Arcadia in Manistee County for the last thirty-plus years, uh, and having driven through, uh, I, there's just a lot of great things going here, and I just encourage you to, uh, continue that momentum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Miller, Director of Economic Development for the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce, four hundred River Street. We, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the chamber, that we are in full support of this project. Little River Holdings has done a, a great, uh, deal of work on, on the site plan and also, what has been said tonight, on inclusion and discussions with other community stakeholders. So, uh, wearing the DDA hat that I can wear, um, you know, we have had a, a lot of healthy discussions about this plan, what it looks like, uh, whether or not to be partners, how do we work together? The Manistee Area Chamber's Economic Development Council has been, uh, very involved, uh, in discussions on this for a number of months and years. Uh, one of our members is here tonight, Sammy, Sammy from the Tourism Authority. So, we, um, we see that this is going to be a tremendous opportunity for jobs, for moving residents downtown, and for having more visitors, uh, to our area and to our downtown. And so as this, uh, continues to progress, we anticipate great things, and the word has been used quite a bit about it being transformational. Uh, I think the, the level of investment, the scope, and the vision, uh, this will be a transformational project for our area and for downtown specifically, and, uh, we hope that you will approve this, uh, this PUD and continue to assist the project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Helge, four fifty Cedar Street here in Manistee. I want to first thank the Planning Commission. You folks are doing a great job for this community. You're taking on very difficult situations and, uh, really finding ways to make things work. The great example of that is the Hampton Inn. You did a great job there, asking the developers there to put a restaurant up on the fifth floor, up on the top floor. That's a fantastic move for this community. Obviously, this is a great project. This is a project that I think we should support, and I think they've done a great job so far, you know, especially their architect in shoehorning in, you know, these buildings on that property. But, uh, I see a lack of, oh, what, what word should I use? I see a lack of vision, and I'd just like to challenge the architect a little bit. Because we are the Victorian port city. We, uh, we do have a very, uh, important historic, uh, downtown. And what I see on these renderings are boxes. They're just boxes. I want to challenge you to take in some of the architecture that was developed in the eighteen eighties through the nineteen twenties, and start thinking about that and incorporating that into the design, because I think that would really help this project and help the Gateway and draw people into Manistee like you're hoping. So again, I really just hope that we could, you know, put something together, much like you did for the Hampton Inn project, and ask, uh, them to consider the Victorian history of our community, not just a box. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It is eight thirty-five. We close, uh, that portion, this portion of the public hearing. Move along to public comments on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, if there, there will not be any interaction between the podium and the audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can terminate this portion of the meeting. You will be allowed five minutes. So if there's anyone has anything to say about the agenda tonight, please come to the podium. Okay, we'll move along, and we will go into new business, minor amendment to special use permit, one thousand Manistee Street.
Yes, so this is a special use permit that you guys approved, um, in April of twenty twenty-two. Due to some changes in plans, the capacity of the development has been scaled back a bit, and, um, the property owner is here and can speak more on that, but that is the main reason for this amendment being pursued. So in your packets, I had included, um, the site plan amendment regulation from the zoning ordinance, showing that this does constitute a minor amendment to a site plan, uh, the amendment application, a brief narrative from the applicant, and then what you approved as site plans and with the approved special use permit, and what is being presented. So you'll see that there was a fairly larger parking lot, um, initially, and then I'll just get down to the new site plan, and we'll let the applicant come up and add anything more.
Hi. Ken Armour, one zero zero nine Manistee Street. Uh, you can see the minor amendment that we've made based off, uh, some of the changes in the, the business. Um, I think, uh, I've worked with all the different, uh, not municipalities, but departments, along with Katie, to create something that's in compliance with all the city ordinances. With this plan, I think it's better. It creates, uh, it's much more green space, and we're able to reuse some of the existing foundations now for, uh, future development.
From the commission?
Only one. When do you think, uh, this building will be in production?
As soon as I get to go ahead here. Uh, the con- the, the concrete company is under contract right now, uh, so as soon as this is okayed. They hope to, Katie's supposed to contact the state, which everybody's already walked through, uh, the fire department, the city, SafeBuild. Everybody's been through it, everybody's, I've addressed every concern that everybody's had, so I guess to answer your question, a week.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're able to operate as it is now until the concrete company, he's three to four weeks out, but he's already been engaged and the contract is done, so there's, uh, there's no waiting.
So this is going to be, you're going to be pouring more cement for parking, or what?
Yeah, because it's uneven, uh, in those areas, so that's going to be a new level parking area there that you see.
Okay.
And that, where the entry is, that's all brand-new, because if you remember, it's, uh, it's pretty rough right now. So that's all getting cleaned up, and that's, that's going to be all brand-new, the apron from the road to there.
Oh, you do have to jump up because of the old floor and the century plant to get there.
Right.
Very well aware of that. All right. Any question, any other things before we move along? None? Thank you. So that, um, is there a motion to approve or for approval of the minor amendment to special use permit for one thousand nine Manistee Street?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second?
Second.
By Bob, discussion?
Chair, if I may, um, I think something, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think something that Ken did want to request as well was that he could get occupancy prior to the parking lot being complete, because I can't really sign off on occupancy unless we have a built site plan. Um, if that's something that the commission is comfortable with, I, you know, he's indicating that it would be done in three to four weeks. I don't know if there's some other specified amount of time where I could give him occupancy, and then the parking lot shall be constructed in sixty days or something to that effect. Ken, is that correct? Is that something that you wanted to...
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
Request of the commission?
The precedent said that they'll allow me to move forward, but you still have control over it within thirty or sixty days if it's not done to revoke the approval. So, and it's just, like I said, I got it under contract now, so it's three to four weeks, and I discussed with Katie about that and getting a sixty-day, uh, approval, that it's got to be done within sixty days, so...
And from my perspective, I just can't, you know, I can't sign off and say, yes, this site plan has been satisfied, here's your business registration, here's your occupancy, without it being constructed, and that, so that is something that he wanted to pose to the commission if that was something you guys were comfortable with, allowing for... Is sixty days a comfortable timeframe? That's... Yes?
Yeah.
I think also, they should also keep in mind, if something happens with the concrete company, if they provide something where they're being delayed, that they bring it to us, because some, because there could be, it could be something that could happen. Well, so, maybe depending on what happens with the concrete company.
And I have no issues because it's already concrete. I mean, it's not like we're parking vehicles on, on, on open ground, so I have no problem.
Do we need an amendment to the motion?
Um, yes, we would need to amend that motion. And one other thing I did want to point out to you guys that's covered, um, on this plan but did change from the previous plan, is that the internal transport is no longer on the north side of the building but on the rear of the building, so I want to make sure that was noted by the commission.
So I'd like to amend my, um, request to approve with the addition of sixty days occupancy for the concrete.
There's a certain procedure to amending a motion, and that is not the correct procedure.
You need a motion to amend the motion.
Motion to amend. Well, we haven't, we ever get...
Yes, we have.
Even to a vote, we didn't.
No, we didn't. You don't have to vote on the first one, right?
You do.
You do.
After, you have a motion to amend, support it, vote on the motion to amend, and then you go back.
And then go back to the first one.
Okay.
Yes. So you need a motion to amend your motion to include sixty days for the parking lot to be completed, um, after occupancy, so that, that would be the motion to amend on the floor.
Motion to amend.
Uh-huh.
To allow sixty, uh, sixty days for the concrete work and include occupancy now.
And we need a second, correct?
Yeah.
Second, no, second, and a second by Bob, so now we're cooking. Okay. Now we vote. So any further discussion?
You'd be voting, just so you're clear.
Voting on the amendment.
And if that passes, then we go back and approve the whole motion.
Yes, I need the motion.
All right, so...
Two votes coming up.
Yep. Or deny.
Discussion?
Whichever way they...
None? Please take your role, Nancy.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Now...
She has a motion.
Now...
Which was moved and supported.
Right, and further discussion on that? None? Please take your role.
Yep, got it. Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Next, um, Z two-three dash zero four. Is there a motion on this to approve or, uh, disapprove, I guess?
This is the one for the gas station?
No, no, this...
Oh, no, this, the R-two.
Oh, the...
Two, two fronts.
Front, back, yeah.
Two front, I'm sorry, so...
I make the motion that we accept the, uh, zoning amendment as provided to us.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Shelley. Further discussion? Please take your role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Next, Z two-three dash zero five. Auto repair on Fifth Street on Key Street. So...
I understand that this one is the one where we're adding the language to the R-twos, where we have to have a special use permit for an auto placement, correct?
Correct.
Special land use.
Special land use that requires Key Street frontage.
Are you good with that, Bob?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Second?
I'll second that.
By Marlene. Further discussion?
Well, I, I did like the idea that you talked about that we might be able to, uh, include, instead of going, uh, and amending the R-two, being able to add in on prior use, that was something that you were going to look at?
Yeah, that is something I could look into, um, for this particular property.
Like to be something we can come back to later and address it?
Um...
Want to hold up?
Or do we table?
You guys could table the decision until next month if you wanted to look into a little bit more. I do, again, want to write, remind the commission that the, the reasoning for approving or denying this motion should not be based off one particular property, but if you guys would like me to look into that as it relates to this particular property, and then maybe do a little bit more of your own research, um, through the master plan, and make sure it's something that, you know, would really be supported or is a decision you really want to make, um, you could most definitely table this until, uh, work session or next month's meeting, a specified date, and we could pick it up again with, um, everyone having a little bit more time to think about it and looking into that other option for this particular property.
I'm sure that everyone understands the consequences or the potential consequences of including this in the, in the R-two district.
But having that written in there that it has to be a special land use...
Right, yep.
That, that puts a lot of control in our hands, I think.
Yeah, they would still have to go through the, the, the process on an individual basis.
They can't just apply, I'll say, we used to have a gas station here, so we're allowed to, but they're still going to have to come to us to get that permit.
So if we pass this, for, for this, and look into it, and then make it that each individual that comes before us is treated separately, is that my understanding?
So with having it allowable as a special land use, anyone who comes forward under any special land use has to come to, you know, come to the commission for their approvals. So that would be the case for this type of use in this district if you guys chose to allow for it.
Basically, all we're doing is just adding another use to this district.
Correct.
That requires a special land.
It's already allowable. It is not an allowable use in the district, not ending, right, right.
Add a probable one's in it, but they need to have a special land use for it to be taken forward.
So, um, so we, we have a motion.
Yep.
You want to rescind that motion and move to a table? What, what is, what is the commission?
I'm, I'm extremely satisfied with what we have written, and, you know, because we already had written in there that we're just adding that use to the district, but for that, this use to be done, they have to come to us for a special land use permit, otherwise they can't do it.
Yeah.
It's got some teeth in it, from the way, way I followed reading on it.
Do you need a second?
Unless George sees something doesn't have.
We have a second. Marlene seconded it. So, um, we move along with, with the motion to approve, so please take your role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Slawinski?
No.
Commissioner Weiner?
Um, no.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Approved. Approved. Next, special land use request, PUD, gateway development. Thoughts?
Reading all through the stuff that we got sent earlier today and from the, from the Site Plan Review Committee, it looks like they've covered everything pretty thoroughly. We understand this is still preliminary drawings, there's more details to come yet. I'm agreeing with all the stuff that the Site Plan Review Committee has put forward, and I have no other questions on the stuff on it.
Mick?
I do have one, the waiver for the forty percent of the ground floor space for commercial. Not, I don't quite understand the requirement because it does look like there is ample opportunity for commercial space, and I'm not sure that, you know, waiving the entire forty percent is in our best interest overall. I understand the idea that some of those eight facilities may not become work-to-home sites, but even that, I don't know that eliminating the whole forty percent would be appropriate, and I'm wondering if maybe a lower percentage, but at least maintain a percentage of commercial space requirements.
And Chair, if I may, discussions with the developer, that was something that as staff we went back and forth with as well, you know, what exactly that would look like. And I think the intention is with that, you know, they want to offer these as a live-work unit with some commercial aspect, but furthermore, they also want the ability to potentially make them strictly residential townhouses. So, to simplify things, you know, really just waiving the forty percent, ultimately it's up to you as a commission, you know, they still have the commercial aspects on the ends of the building, and again, still want to offer that option as a live-work unit but don't necessarily want to subject the tenants to having a ground-floor storefront. I know some of the examples used for other developments was like a yoga studio or maybe even like an office that is smaller for a small business but isn't necessarily going to need to occupy the first forty percent. But yes, they do want to take it a step further and actually request that they could be utilized as strictly residential units, which I think that there are very many mixed-use aspects of this development, that we're still hitting that mark of a mixed-use structure, and, you know, I like to highlight this, it is ultimately up to you as a commission what you want to decide, but we were, as staff, we were thinking that, you know, part of a compromise for that could be that the live-work units may have the option to be entirely residential but shall not be leased or rented for a period of less than twenty-eight consecutive days. So, just ideas, this list that was put together was just the initial thoughts at some of the requests of the developer, and then staff's comments and ideas for how those requests could be stipulated and potentially compromised, but again, ultimately entirely up to you, and this is just kind of a starting point. So, if there's anything that you guys are not comfortable with or don't feel like should be a part of the development, that's something that you all can deliberate on and vote on.
Should we, before the discussion, and I apologize for jumping ahead of this, go through the stipulations and then discuss these?
Yeah, we can go through them line by line. Honestly, a lot of these are just highlighting kind of terms of, with a planning development, you are allowed to, you know, in a sense, I don't want to say violate, but violate certain aspects of the zoning ordinance as it relates to uses, dimensional standards, and the trade-off is that it's a, you know, innovative design and a mixed-use development. So, Mark, do you want to go through them, or would you like me to start going through them? Okay.
So, we'll run through these and then discuss, and go back to the discussion. Final renderings and Lumen plan for proposed signage shall be presented and approved by Planning Commission prior to installation.
That's reasonable.
Yep.
So, we're good with that?
Yep.
Do you want us to approve each of these stipulations?
Do we, do we need a motion or just a straw?
Um, if you guys, it is helpful for us to take a motion on each one, so we don't have to do it twice. We could start taking motions if everyone feels good about them now, you know, instead of going through them and then coming back and voting on them, but I think that is really helpful to do the motion on each. I think it would be appropriate to do a voice vote if you guys are comfortable with that on each of them, and then we can come back through and do a final motion should you choose to approve this project with stipulations at the end.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, for each stipulation.
So, is there a motion on potential stipulation number one on final renderings of Lumen?
Yes.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Mick. Discussion, none, we'll just take a simple voice vote. Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Pam?
Yes. Think we could just go with that?
Yes.
Yeah?
Aye.
All right, so let's... Internal layout of buildings may be modified in terms of location amenities and dimensions of rooms. Number of condo, hotel units, apartments, and live-work units may be modified within fifteen percent of what is presented, provided there are no material changes to the building footprint and exterior. All amenities shown must be incorporated into the development. Is there discussion? Everybody good?
Yep.
Take a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Pam, second.
Second.
Shelley, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Pool shown on site plans may be modified in terms of size, location within the proposed condo hotel.
That has to be in there.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shelley, second.
Second.
By Bob. Certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Exterior walkway shown on the east side of the condo hotel may be modified for MDOT. Proposal for roadwork on U.S. 31 and adjacent MDOT property. Discussions?
That one's perfectly understandable when you got MDOT involved. It could be, throw a lot of monkey wrenches into it.
Never. Motion?
I'll motion.
Bob?
I'll second.
Mick? Certified by saying aye.
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 Waiver for lighting to exceed one candle foot allowance as provided on the lighting plan at entrances of parking structures on north side of building, of north side of building facing River Street. Anything? Discussion?
Do we know, do we know what the current candle power on the lights on River Street now is?
I don't, but that's a good question. I would imagine that they are, they definitely exceed one candle foot.
Who's over there now?
Yeah, our lights down River Street, but that is a good question.
That's all I had, I was wondering, does it exceed the streetlights that we have now?
Right.
Anybody from...
The boat's got, I mean, definitely exceeding that, so.
Right, but the...
And I don't know what they were set at.
The streetlights, what do you think the candle foot of the streetlights would be?
I mean, it's where you measure.
Right, true.
So, like, when you're angled down, the way we make them do, if you're directly beneath it, yeah, they're going to measure higher than if you're to the side. So, it's really difficult when you guys are giving a waiver for this to like, say like, hey, this is, you know, what it should be at. So, like, when you guys are looking at a waiver for a one-foot candle on a property line, you know, they have a certain amount shown in their site plan, I believe, Katie, that they're anticipating. What I would do is relook at what you are looking and see if you're comfortable with that candle limit, and if you are, say that you approve it, exceed it by what they show on their site plan.
I'm looking at it, and his perspective is, we're safety issue down there for people from the hotel, the parking structure.
We did something similar for Onequa Village where we set five-foot candles on a property line that faces a roadway, and we did some, a little bit of testing on it at night, looking at different areas down there, and we, and we went five, and I don't think any of these exceed five. So, it's going to be, it's not going to be like what you see over at certain buildings that we have LEDs on them, so this is, this is what they, what we would, I would, I would assume is reasonable.
So, the language?
I would mod.
Suggesting just modifying by what's in the site plan?
Five candle.
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely want a top end on there, I don't want it just to be open.
So, we do have as provided on the lighting plan, but do we want to say not to exceed four-point-one as provided on the lighting plan?
Is that the highest one? I see.
Four-point-one.
I thought it was a four-six.
Or not to exceed five? I know there's nothing...
I'd say not to exceed five, that way...
Okay. Not to exceed five and as provided on the lighting plan. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion?
I'll second it.
Not to, not?
Not to exceed five.
Okay, all right. Motion by Shelley, second by Marlene, certified by saying aye.
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 Okay, passed. Okay, I lost my wish. How about that? Waiver of the following regulations. Forty percent of the street ground floor accessory front align with, align with the public road, not alley, and shall exceed, shall extend into the building for forty percent of the street ground floor area. Live-work units may have this option, may have the option to be entire, entirely residential but not, sorry, but shall not be leased or rented for a period of less than twenty-eight consecutive days.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
Second.
Shelley, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All commercial and office retail spaces on ground floor, live-work units within the southern building may be leased by any business that is permitted in the C-three district under the current zoning ordinance identified in the attachment A and defines...
Attachment one-A, and I can expand on this one a little bit more, so we wanted to make sure that we really covered allowable uses for those kind of white space commercial areas. The condo hotel already has their uses established on the site plan, so that's not something that we necessarily had to worry about, but we didn't want it to be drawn into question what is allowed here, you know, what isn't allowed, so we thought, including these attachments as a stipulation of, and these are all permitted uses, current permitted uses of the C-three district, we pulled out all that would be applicable, and then also just pulled out the current definitions for them, just to make it crystal clear for anyone opening up the permit in the future that, you know, individual land use permitting isn't going to be required for the tenants moving in and out of these commercial or office spaces if we cover it under the special use permit itself. So, this is kind of a, you know, for the sake of crystal clear clarity, we have allowable uses identified that are allowed to exist in those tenant spaces in the parking structure building.
Okay.
I'll motion on that one.
Okay. Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
Pam, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Let's see. Commercial office and retail spaces proposed may be divided leased to more than one tenant to meet market demands. This does not apply to the condo hotel portion of the development.
Katie, is this what you meant by if someone only needs a very small commercial space, it might be used, okay.
Yeah, so this kind of gives the developer the option, you know, we see that, again, the uses are already established in the condo hotel, and we do have that additional stipulation which allows them to move locations and size of rooms, but this is making it so that they are not necessarily held to, yeah, the dimensions of those commercial spaces, more specifically in the parking structure building. Should someone not need six thousand square feet for a commercial space, but they find three tenants who each need two thousand, you know, that's great. We don't want that to hold them up or have to go through another approval process, as long as the Planning Commission is comfortable with that.
If two or three companies want to go into that commercial space and they agree to share the space, they can do that.
Right, or even if they wanted to, you know, white box it for three different tenants, as long as they're not changing the exterior of what you guys were proposed, this would give them that flexibility without having to come back for an amendment just to show if, you know, tenant space is being adjusted.
It gives us a good flexibility for sale, rental points.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion Shelley, second.
Second.
Bob, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Development may provide up to ten boat slips as necessary but not shall provide any marina services beyond the birthing of vessel, vessels, but no more than what is permitted by Eagle and Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, and you guys are comfortable with ten, I mean, really, it's something that will ultimately be dictated by the other agencies, but the control of no more than ten is something you guys are comfortable with.
And also with the, how deep, how far out they go into that harbor, I imagine it's going to be...
Plus, where Eagle and the Corps of Engineers are involved.
Right.
I think ten's a good number.
Yep.
Depending how big they want to make them.
Yeah. Second.
I said that option when you're a boat owner to move up there.
Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by Pam, second.
Second.
Shelley, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Development shall provide one parking space per dwelling, dwelling unit in the condo hotel building on the north side of River Street. Development shall provide fifty additional parking spaces specifically for banquet, for staff banquet rooms and restaurant within two hundred feet of the development. Remaining parking may be designated, designated as appropriate for development. Discussion? Good numbers?
Yeah, the distance fits good.
Okay. Motion?
I'll motion.
Bob, on a motion?
Second.
Mick, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Developers shall provide remediation plan for, to the zoning administrator for all, showing all contamination, and will be controlled to and meet the required local, state, federal requirements prior to commencing construction. Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
Shelley, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Developers shall provide final construction plans to zoning administrator for interior and exterior development prior to commencing construction.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The, the developer has to provide it prior to commencing construction. I know it's not uncommon for some plans to change during construction. Should there be any additional language on there?
We could require construction drawings and then as-built at the end. I know that as-built plans are typically done. The intention with that is just to make sure we have something on record to show what will be the final layout, so I guess however that needs to be worded.
Are you comfortable with this language? Does it say that?
Shall provide final construction plans? I don't know. I mean, is that, is that enough? I would, I would ask you guys that.
Well, you got the final approved construction plans and the as-built construct, as-built plans.
Yeah.
Have two sets of plans.
So, just loop both of those in there, final construction plans and as, oh, wait, that'll have to be a separate thing, I think, because it won't be prior to construction, really, as-built, yeah.
Yeah, as-built.
So, we can add that as an additional.
Yeah.
So, this...
Construction plans is what it means, and then a final, then another stipulation be providing an as-built.
And I'm sorry, I think there was a motion?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet. So, do we have a motion on, or do we go to as-built first?
I think that you guys continue, can continue with this one, and we can add the as-built plans as an additional separate stipulation.
Yep.
All right, so is there a motion on this?
I'll make a...
I'll make one.
Nothing, Shelley.
Shelley, second?
I'll second.
By Marlene, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any proposed amendment, including minor amendments to, to the approved site plans, shall be subject to planning commission review and approval.
At what point?
Well, this was something that, um, I know with bigger developments, particularly plan unit developments, there's other factors that may come into play that a minor amendment, so the zoning ordinance details criteria for a minor amendment, and a minor amendment does not always have to go to the planning commission for final approval. The site plan review committee holds the authority to forward it to the planning commission if they see fit. So, um, with this being a PUD and many factors coming into play, I just wanted the commission to consider if that was something additional that you guys wanted to include. Um, cause there is the potential that there could be a minor amendment in the future, and it would not come back before you for approval if the site plan review committee didn't see fit. But ultimately, that's up to you guys, if that's something that you want extra as a stipulation, or if you're comfortable with the site plan review committee.
My only concern with this would be-
Delay.
We typically, the length of time. We typically only meet once a month unless we were to put to, and I would hate to-
Hold them up.
Hold them up, yeah.
Yeah, that's understandable.
The way I understand this one is if the DPW or the fire department finds something during the construction that needs to be changed, they can approve the change through that and go right on.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, if you guys don't feel that one's necessary, we can just eliminate and move on.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Strike?
Strike, yep.
Well, or do we just want to take out the minor amendments?
Well, the zoning ordinance does dictate that any major amendment would come back to you for approval.
Alright, so perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the wording on the as built, um, developer shall provide as built construction plans to the zoning administrator?
Uh-huh.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I think we could include that the, um, the developer shall provide as built construction plans prior to the issuance of a certificate, provided to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
I think, I think the as built are an important one, cause I've been, other parts of the state where they not had as built provided, then you go back in to do some additional work in the place. Plans show, they're supposed to be here, you dig, and all of a sudden, it's not on plans.
Yep.
That'll cover stuff like that.
Are we good with, are we good with this?
Yes.
Yes.
We do have one more-
Yes, we do.
A couple little ones on the back. Okay, I wanted to make sure you saw those. Okay, thank you.
Um, so, that is good, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next one is, um, the stipulations from, um, the city, from the DPW?
No.
Do we have more?
Yeah, for your termination.
Oh, missed those. Okay, sorry.
And I wanted to break these out because I had sent you guys a preliminary of everything that you'd seen on the front page, but then these were just a couple of additional things that came up more recently. In the zoning ordinance, we do have a two-year commencing construction date built in for the plan unit development. It appears that this development may need more like three years, so I didn't know if that was something that you guys wanted to incorporate, um, a three-year termination date over the two years that the zoning ordinance provides?
I would think yes.
I think, with the complexity of this project, it's inevitable, something's gonna go haywire along the line.
Well, and their timeline already reaches into the third year, so.
It'll give them some flexibility for glitches that'll come up.
Right, funding for years.
Huh? What did you say, Pam?
From today's date, it's actually four years.
That is correct.
Yep.
Okay. So, stipulation, three-year termination date, are we good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, certified by saying, or motion, sorry. Motion? Shelley, second?
Second.
Bob? Certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Condo hotel may receive occupancy when parking structure is complete prior to east and west portions of parking structure being constructed.
That one too.
That makes sense. You get them open and running to help provide funds to build the other two parts.
Yep.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bob, second?
Second.
By Mick, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Marlene, you say aye?
Yeah, I said yes.
Alright. Developer may convert fourth floor space, office space on southern building into residential units to meet market demands.
I love that one, we need the housing.
Okay?
Yeah, I like that one too.
Good, good with this?
Mm-hmm.
Marlene, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second?
I'll second.
By Pam, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Bike racks, bike rack or racks shall be installed within the development. It's good?
I like that one.
Good, yes. Motion?
Motion by Bob, second, by Pam, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Crosswalks, crosswalk must be installed to provide safe pedestrian crossing from parking structure to condo hotel.
I would put the crosswalks, the S-
Exactly.
Yeah, crosswalks and I, I think, wasn't there other language?
High visibility.
High visibility, yeah.
High visibility crosswalks.
Recommendation from the engineer.
Yes.
I, I do think T said that there would be at least two.
Yep.
Like the ones up in Travers that blink and, yeah. But, yeah, we want multiple.
Crosswalks must be installed to provide high visibility, safe pedestrian crossing, parking structure to condo hotel. Is that good?
Good.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion Mick, second?
Second.
Excuse me, certified by saying aye?
Aye.
I have-
Oh.
An additional one also, just, although it's been mentioned, uh, I think it's only fair that we add that the restaurant and the bar will be open to the public.
You know, it's just been mentioned, but there was nothing in writing.
Correct.
Okay. So, stipulation, restaurant and bar to be open to-
Open to the general public.
What, how am I done that?
Yep.
I think you're really, when you're doing something like that, you're really extending beyond what the scope of the planning commission's obligations are, which is a police power that is exercised by the planning commission for the health and safety, for the, uh, natural resources that are available and not making sure that those aren't affected. I think that placing and condition, I mean, I think they've indicated that, but saying that this restaurant should be open for the public, I think extends beyond what the scope of your authority is. And let me, let me also say something on the two-year, cause I, what were you extending that to?
Three years.
Years. I don't think that's authorized.
Okay.
I think the, the PUD ordinance says that it needs to be two years and, and if they, if they want to extend that, there is a process within the PUD ordinance by written request of the planning commission to extend. So, I think you really need to keep that at two years.
Okay.
They still have the ability to come back and extend if they desire.
Okay, so we amend-
Thank you.
Amend the three-year.
The two-year, with the option to extend.
Yeah, and the, yeah.
That's built right into the zoning ordinance, so we can just eliminate that, and then they would have to come back before you, before the expiration of the two years. But if they're showing substantial, um, progress towards completion, then I think they should be covered. But I'll make sure that I find that exact language and that the developer's aware of it, so that they're aware of if and when they would need to come back before you.
Okay, so we strike, we strike this?
Three-year.
Yes. Um, I had one written down too, and I, I don't know if we covered it, um, and it was one that you mentioned, Katie, the parking structure must always be tied to the condo hotel.
Oh, yes. Um, yes. And I think the most appropriate would be to maybe make a motion to eliminate the three-year termination date stipulation, since we had made a motion to include that. Okay, so it's not an official, okay, never mind.
Probably not, yeah. The hotel will have liability for it.
The ordinance actually says that they provide parking within-
Then they're fine.
Right, so as long, they just need to continue to provide parking within two hundred feet.
Okay. So, what Mike is getting at is that we did kind of cover that in a sense with requiring the ninety spaces and the fifty spaces to be within two hundred feet of the development.
Okay.
So, yes, we did, we did already cover that in a sense.
So, do you want a motion to, on the two-year?
No, that's not necessary. We can just eliminate that as one of the stipulations, um, to be included in the final motion.
We haven't approved the final motion yet. We're just going through stipulation by stipulation. We've not made a formal motion yet on the final stipulations.
So, with Shelley's stipulation, the parking structure hotel condo to be tied together in perpetuity?
Um, we did cover it in a sense with requiring that they provide parking within, um, that they provide the one space per dwelling unit to the condo hotel and fifty additional spaces within two hundred feet of the development. You would assume that is going to be the parking garage, but ultimately, if they're providing that parking, yeah, within two hundred feet, which is the language of the zoning ordinance currently.
Two hundred feet's gonna take you past the Vision Street.
Mm-hmm. So, I think that that stipulation covers it in itself.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? On that parking garage, who maintains that? The hotel? Is there, is that well lit? And is, is there security cameras or security that monitors that?
Um, they did have their lighting plan. I think that's something that, you know, the hotel will address and will have to, you know, they will have to maintain it and have security as they see fit.
Mm-hmm.
So, with Shelley's stipulation?
I think we need it.
We don't need it?
Mm-mm.
But do we need a stipulation that they be tied together on, on the same property, property?
Um, that, I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to the assessor about how we can, you know, if there's a way. I think the special use permit itself, you know, controls the entirety of the development, so if they were to try to pull aspects out, they'd have to come back to you guys regardless.
Depends, depends how they give it for ID numbers, tax ID numbers, parcel numbers.
Please, please come to that.
The property currently is made up of seven tax parcels. There are three on the north side and four on the south side. The, um, three parcels on the north side, uh, at this point, we're going, we plan to combine them because the condo hotel will be, will start under one ownership, and of course, eventually, there will be ninety-plus tax parcels. On the south side, uh, the, the buildings do not, the proposed buildings do not line up exactly with the tax parcels.
No, they don't.
So, we're going to be reconfiguring, uh, those parcels. And, um, I want to make sure that the parking footprint, uh, is not in any way combined or perceived that it is combined with a hotel, with a condo hotel. It's going to be, um, its own tax parcel. That's our intent.
So, it's like a separate entity?
Kind of. For operational purposes, we want to have the ability to, uh, to be its own, uh, parcel. And, uh, we have not yet determined how the reconfiguration of the south side would be. We just want to make sure that, um, it's understood and it's on the record that, um, there's no confusion about tying the condo hotel with the parking. But the parking for the condo hotel will be always available, or, um, yeah, it will have to be dedicated parking for the, those ninety spaces.
Be the same ownership, but just two different parcel ID numbers, pretty much.
It may be sep- uh, the same ownership, maybe two different, uh, and legal entities.
We didn't get it to a stipulation on that, so.
No, we didn't make a stipulation on that at all.
Stipulation, okay.
Yeah, cause it's eventually, they're gonna eventually apply for the combining of parcels for, get rid of three IDs on one part, one side, get one ID for construction and everything else. That's, that's a typical thing on projects.
Uh, the next one is, um, handout we received on the, um, DPW, police chief, city manager, uh, fire department, city engineer, um, stipulations. Do we make one stipulation on this, Katie, or do we go?
Hold on, let me ask really quick. They, so I have the site plan review committee comments. Do they need to add that as a modification to the motion that all site plan review committee comments are included, like with their approval, or is that just?
I almost think we get filed just to recommend it by the-
So, the memo itself could be included as a modification?
Site plan committee.
Like, just like a stipulation? Okay. It's all in one document. I want to include it as an attachment.
You include it as one stipulation, a site plan review.
Okay, yeah, so that can be its own stipulation, the site plan review committee memo with site plan review committee comments.
Okay.
Right, but- Right. Yeah. The chair is who you'd have to ask.
Yes, please.
We've reviewed all of the departmental comments. There's only one that is a little odd to us, and so, it, in a way, it kind of allows us to, to get around our concern, but we just want to make sure we're not held to, um, kind of the odd part of it, and it's, it's the item number twelve on the, um, fire department's concern.
That's kind of a steam, like it's common stipulation they pretty put on all their things for the fire department, they want access someplace.
Well, it's, it's very unusual. I mean, none of the other, it only, it specifically talks about the mixed use on the east. It's typically unusual for urban, I mean, you can't get behind a building, and it does, it does say though that other suitable alternatives. But the reason why it's a little bit difficult is because it completely, materially affects our plan. Our plan doesn't have a alleyway behind there, and I think typically, uh, buildings don't have that. So, we're, the building will be sprinkled, and the building actually has two frontage access points for emergency access. So, it's actually better than a typical downtown building where you only have the front. So, I guess we'd like to just make sure that the, that we don't have to put an access road behind the building, cause that would change our plans materially, and it's very odd.
Doesn't the west side of the east building have access from parking?
Yes, but I think they're maybe suggesting something even more than that. So, yes, you could drive in there, but you're under the parking structure, if that's suitable.
Fire department's looking at, they're looking for a place they can get their aerial in. Which, in that area, it's unrealistic to put an aerial apparatus in there. From River Street and Cypress Street, they can get-
Correct.
Over seventy-five percent of the building easily. They can take hand lines in on the, on the parking structure.
In, in my experiences too, they don't want to be wedged in between two buildings when they're fighting it.
No.
So, uh, we just think that, um, it, it's just, it just seemed to be an odd, and I don't know if that was just a standard thing, but we just would like to say that, either that one be struck, or we just figure out a way to work with it without having to put an access. So, that's the only thing.
Yeah, I mean, Brent does provide in there, or some alternative method. Um, I don't know how comfortable the commission is, or how that really works with-
We don't know what a suitable alternative.
Right.
I got some good ideas what alternative methods is, cause I'm a state fire instructor, so.
Right.
No, I work with those guys, so I've seen some of the things they look for, and-
So, does that language cover it with other people?
Language cover a lot, cause anything suitable.
Okay.
That means us going in with air packs and hoses.
Okay.
Or do we, we don't want to assume?
No, we don't assume. We're not gonna assume, but they're gonna come up with a plan for, because they're supposed to come up with site plan, uh, plans for every commercial building, how to, to attack a fire in there.
They wrote it, so I'm assuming they know what they mean by other suitable alternative.
They're gonna, they're gonna know what's going, when, when they're- They're gonna, they're gonna know what's going, when the building's, they're gonna be coming in there during construction anyway and see what's going on.
So that, I guess this is a question for Mr. Saylor then.
Well, one about just adding language, it said that would not include the additional votes of access.
Access road. It's not recorded on any other buildings, that's the only building they.
If that's what you're contemplating and the planning commission's contemplating, just, we could add maybe that language.
Okay.
I don't think there was an alleyway in that block.
Well, and, and the topography doesn't allow for one.
No.
No. Thank you.
So if you guys are looking at, according to Site Plan Memo from the Site Plan Review Committee, you could make your motion on it to add it in minus the fire chief's number twelve, I believe, was it right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So minus, minus number twelve, go back with the additional language, or just take twelve out?
Oh, adding it?
Yes.
Okay, well then, I would add it then, yeah.
The other suitable alternative leaves a lot of stuff wide open for them to work with.
Mm-hmm. Not to include an access road.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
So, okay. So with this, we make a motion for the, on the Site Plan Review Committee, right?
Mm-hmm.
For this.
Yep, the memo provided.
Memo provided, okay.
Plus the not to include an access road on number twelve.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Shelley, motion second. Marlene? Certified by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Unless you guys have anything to add, I believe that's everything that we had on the list. And now we would take a final motion, either, either to approve or deny, if you guys are at that point. And approve it with modifications, but we need to read all these off, right?
That's the round that goes.
Uh-huh. So I can go, is that appropriate for me to go through and read them, and then someone can make that motion?
So the motion could be to accept or motion to approve or deny.
So the motion would be to approve the site plan as requested by the developer.
Okay.
To deny it, approve with modifications, list out the stipulations that you guys just added to that master stipulation list, and they prove the modifications would be that. And then you would, you would discuss and then vote.
Some motion to adopt a resolution.
Yeah.
Some motion to adopt a resolution to approve.
Oh, yeah.
So we go through the stipulations one more time?
The, the one to get them down on the record, yes. If that's the round you guys are going.
So let's see, so we're gonna go through the stipulations?
Yes.
Or do we, do we approve the pod with stipulations and then read all the stipulations before we vote?
Yeah, they have to be contained in the motion.
So, so Jordan is saying that you could pass it as a resolution, like, we usually would typically add that to a master list individually, and then you approve the master list. He's saying that resolution could just be to pass that with what you guys have just discussed, if that's the round that you.
I mean, you went through them point by point by point and approved.
So we can basically make an appo, a motion to approve the stipulations that we all agreed to as a motion?
It's a, it's a motion to adopt a resolution.
Okay.
Motion.
Yep. Motion to adopt a resolution of approval with the following modifications that we had just gone through in addition to the Site Plan Review Committee memo provided. Is that a good motion? Okay.
Okay.
And then we're gonna list everything.
So is there a motion to adopt with, some resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the pod with the stipulations, master stipulations list that we just reviewed.
And the Site Plan Review Committee memo?
Yeah.
Site Plan.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Second, okay, we have a motion to approve by Mick, second by Marlene. Any further discussion? None, please take a room.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Semensky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Umberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Old business, we have known public comments and communications. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comments, please come to the podium, name and address, please. We have up to five minutes. Anyone? No? Okay, move along. Staff reports?
So I have the land use permits and business registration log for you all, as well as signs and HGC permits. So if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them. And I guess we can go through that, and then I had one other thing for you all, two other things, I'm sorry. A lot of these you guys have seen, but, you know, towards the end, yeah, it's kind of slowed, slowed down, later summer. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
No. Okay. I'm just gonna go through a couple of the city manager's updates for you guys. The Water Works Building, the Historical Society has officially turned the building back over to the city, so it'll be exciting to see what comes of that building. I'm hopeful to see it still look how it looks and someone do something cool with it, whether that's the city or a private entity. City Hall steps should be under construction soon, so I know we've had some issues with contractors. The city's been working tirelessly on trying to get someone out, but everyone knows how it is with contractors right now. It can be really difficult.
I thought we had the Smithsonian doing forensic work.
Uh, let's see. The Ramsdale hired a new director, Laura Ortiz-Lavelle, so that's exciting that they got a new director in there. And a couple of revocable licenses went to the city, city council on the first, which, did those pass? Yeah, so that was for a couple of businesses on River Street looking to, you know, we know that the buildings on River Street are built out to the property line, so the city has to get involved if there's any infrastructure that has to cross. And so this is for necessary infrastructure, a fire escape, and a kind of catwalk that will connect, kind of provide ADA access in a connection to the rear of a building that is on River Street, providing, you know, that same level access to the back portion of the building. So those are passed by council, which is exciting for those two businesses. So those are just a couple of brief updates I have for you guys. And then something else I wanted to pose to the commission is the new marijuana retail business that's going in at 240 Arthur Street. They are looking to add some signage that wasn't included on the original approvals, specifically a monument sign, so that would require a minor amendment to the permit on the file. And you guys had stipulated on that original permit that you wanted to see final, you know, signage. So I had let them know that we would have to go through that process, and they're really itching to get on an agenda with you guys, and wanted me to pose to you all, holding a special meeting before September. So I was thinking maybe we could pick a couple dates that would work for you all, if we could solidify a couple dates tonight, and then I could bring it back to them and see if that's something that they officially want to pursue. So I don't know, the week of the seventh and the week of the fourteenth. They, they seem to believe that they can get plans in, you know, as soon as possible. So I just wanted to get a couple dates and then take it back to them, knowing that those dates would work for you all. I'd let them know Thursday's obviously, you know, tend to work. But I don't know what you guys have in mind that could be.
The week, the seventh.
Seventh is our, seventh is our normal meeting anyway for September.
Well, no, during August. Like, they want like next week or the following, I think next week might be really cutting it close, maybe the week of the fourteenth.
Depending on the day, I have, it's a busy week for me.
The seventh I'm available, the fourteenth I am not, but I don't really remember.
I'm not available for either of those two dates.
During the week at any point, though, the week of the seventh or the week of the fourteen, or even, I mean, really, they're just trying to get on the agenda as soon as possible, but I want to be able to, like, take back a few dates to them so that, because.
Evening?
Yeah, evening, we can do, uh-huh. Any of the evenings.
I can do the seventeenth.
Do the seventeenth, seventeenth, you can, it's fine.
The only, the only Thursday I have available this month after today is the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
Or, or do we want to move it to, depending on if we can get in here?
We could always hold it at the planning department too, if needed.
So.
Yeah, depending on the day.
On a, on a Wednesday?
Wednesdays are typically good for me, but next Wednesday is not, but the Wednesday after would be.
So Wednesday the sixteenth, would that be a good one to pose?
I'm, I'm not available right now after the, the tenth, so through the rest of August.
Should I pose to them Wednesday the ninth, if they can get site plans in and we can get, if staff can feel comfortable getting things together, if they actually submit?
Them available.
If it's after three.
After three.
Marlene?
That's fine by me.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's good for me, so we can do, let's, let's shoot for the ninth.
So Wednesday the ninth, or potentially Wednesday the sixteenth?
Well, we have, Mick won't be here on the sixteenth.
Uh-huh.
Pam, so we're down two, maybe three with Roger, depending on him.
Okay. I would like to pick one more date a little bit further out, just in case we can't make it work next week.
Okay.
Sounds like it's gotta be that.
Well, I guess sixteenth or ninth, that's two good options. Yeah? Or did, oh, you just said that we'll only have, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would have to be the following week, get signs.
Can't, I can't make any Tuesday.
I can't, I can't make any Tuesdays this month either.
Wednesday the twenty-third?
Well, if they want to get going.
Yeah.
So I mean, we can.
Did you get the night?
I'll see if they can make it for the ninth and if we can make it, because that's just gonna be real close for reviewing site plans, getting the meeting posted and getting it done. But I'll see if they can do the ninth with the idea that that will work for the commission, Wednesday the ninth.
If not, it'll be a couple weeks afterwards.
Okay, and that's just kind of is what it is. Okay, sounds good. I'll touch back with you guys if things change, we'll get something else figured out.
And the time for that?
What's that?
The time for the ninth is.
We can do seven PM, like, normal. And that's all I had for you guys. Thank you.
Okay, meetings, trainings, attended by members? Anything?
Not clear.
Member discussion, Marlene?
I have a question, the lady who came before us tonight with her concerns about the retaining law, because she lives up where you can see all of that, and I know once they start construction, that all the pounding and jiggling will maybe loosen that, make it work. Is that something that you address with her, or does that something we have to address?
I think something like that is actually outside of all of our purviews. You know, there's other agencies that are gonna control things like noise and construction and, yeah, things to that effect. Yeah, so that wouldn't be something that, as a zoning administrator or the planning commission, I don't think you would have any obligation to solve. We just have to trust that the proper agencies are going to do their due diligence and make sure that, you know, it's addressed properly.
I just don't want to leave right her off, because she has legitimate concerns.
Yeah, yeah, and I would be happy to go over some of those questions, whatever I can answer, if you want to call me outside of the meeting. I know it becomes a little bit formal with the public comment that, you know, it's not a dialogue. But yes, I would be happy, Marlene, to address some of those concerns.
Other, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Marlene.
Nope, nothing.
Pam?
I was glad to see that we're gonna have concessions at First Street Beach for the rest of the summer, at least, whatever's left of the summer. I'm happy with the way the Hampton Inn turned out, but very nice pleasant surprise with all that. They, I go by almost every night and they look. So it's nice that it's working.
Mick?
Nothing for me?
Bob?
The only thing I have, Katie, is.
On citizen planner classes, is there any, do we have left on our budget?
Um, I can look, I think we're about to start a new budget cycle, though. So I can see what's left of the current and see if you guys have anything additional to spend on training. I can shoot you an email, though. I'll find out what's left in the current year budget, it's gonna be real close to the end, and then you'll have your new budget for next year.
Okay.
But I'll get those numbers for you and send it to you.
Thank you. That's all I have, I just, well, I just want to thank everyone for attending tonight, it was a long meeting. Thank you, thank you to staff for going the extra mile, and the commissioners for putting in the long hours and a lot of hard work, so. With that, I will take a motion, the time now is nine forty-six.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.